Welcome. Today is February 7th, one more week for Valentine's Day for all the folks that need a reminder. I'm going to call the meeting to order. Please stand up for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I need the approval of the meeting agenda, first by Miranda, second by Matt. All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? I need the approval of the minutes for the regular meeting on January 17th, 2024. First by Matt, second by Russ. All in favor? Aye. Okay, five. Presentation and awards, acknowledgements, correspondence, 5.1. We have the bus purchase presentation by Ed Ginnall.
Thank you. Okay, for those of you who've been around for a while, it starts to become, you get to see Ed every meeting from now until, you know, the middle of April. Usually-
And then we don't see you.
Right. So you get to put up with me a couple more months and then it turns back in and I sit back in my little corner and things like that. And then retiring at the end of July. So enjoy it while you can, I guess, is what I'm trying to say. Who knows who's going to be doing these next year? So with this, I usually try to start out with our transportation, just a real quick. It doesn't really affect the 24, 25 budget, but it does in one way affect our budget votes. We incorporate all this stuff in there. So that's what I'm looking at here. I click. Good, perfect. The format, if you've seen it before, follows the exact same thing. Those of you who know I don't like to change a lot, pretty much appreciate that. This year, we're looking at Leonard bus sales, looking at 366 passenger buses. These will have diesel engines. New York State bus sales, 235 passenger buses. These will have gas engines. Trading in, pretty much one for one, three Leonard 66 and two 35 passengers for the New York bus sales. Somebody always asked, and for those of you who are new, why do we trade in versus selling the buses and those type of things? When we trade in, we lower the cost on what we're going to pay for the buses. So then you're getting your aid, transportation aids about 90% back. So you really are spending less money than counting it as a revenue stream in there. So when we trade it in for our purposes, it comes out farther ahead. Plus, we don't have to worry about if somebody starts driving off a lot, there's an issue, those type of things. So it's clean. Financial, you'll notice the numbers are a little bit bigger than normal. Everything is going up. Here's a prime example. So 366 passenger buses this year is about $558,244. 229 passenger buses are $220,978. Gives me a grand total for purchasing of $779,222. Get a trade-in value of $15,500 for a grand total of $763,722. So transportation aid, as I mentioned before, is approximately 90%. So the overall cost, once we get reimbursed with state aid, is about $76,372. Okay? So yes, buses are going up. If you keep on the electric bus thing, they're going to continue to get bigger yet. So it'll be interesting to see where that's going to fall. So funding, taking a look at it. With the increase in costs, we're going to be pulling about $543,722 from the bus reserve this year. And then the remainder from the general fund, about $220,000 to do that. That's why we need to have voter approval because we're pulling from a capital reserve, just a quick refresher. And then this would amend the budget also into an equipment code line. So for those of you on the out-of-budget committee, you know, we can't move stuff into an equipment line without voter approval. So this will get us that purpose. Ballot, it's going to look the exact same thing as last year, just some different things. Shall the Board of Education of the Newark Central School District be authorized to undertake the acquisition of five school buses at an estimated maximum aggregate cost of $779,222, less trade-in value, if any, which there is some, and to appropriate and expend from the existing bus capital reserve funds, the sum of $543,722 for such costs, and to amend the current budget and appropriate and expend up to $220,000 for such costs, such budget appropriation to be reduced by any trade-in value amount received, estimated to be $15,500. So you'll see that. I think this is our third different ballot proposition for buying buses since I've been here. Wording change? So last year, it got updated, and this year, we're going to follow the same one. So any questions on bus purchases? It's pretty much cut and dried. We try to purchase about five to six every year. That keeps our bus fleet up to date. So the buses are usually getting traded in around 10 years that way. And so that helps our maintenance staff, helps the drivers. Some school districts buy all their buses one time. Buying 36 buses at one time is a huger financial thing. This way, you always have some new ones coming in. The other ones are going out. So the mechanics are able to maintain stuff versus buying all at once where all of your fleet gets old at one time. Scott?
I mean, I don't know based on past experience or anything. Is there any, the trade-in value is poor, obviously. Is there any, is there any, like, option to auction those off? Or have you tried that in the past and there's no, nobody wants them, or they get less money than that? Or, I mean-
It's hard to do that because some of them are getting up there in miles, where they'll just take them back. And then they, they got buyers already set up for some stuff like that. And then that puts all the liability on them. I know when we tried to do some auction stuff before, like just talking to other business officials, there was a neighboring school district who did it. And they ran into some issues. Literally, it was like, buy, they pulled out and had a whole bunch of mechanical issues. And then they ended up taking it back and scrapping it and paying, you know. So you run into some of those type things. Also, for the transportation, so now you get into the, the small recesses of transportation that nobody wants to know. If you sell it and you get a revenue from it, it decreases your transportation aid. If you trade it in, that decreases the amount of buses that we're paying for. So you might get more money. Say you get $30,000, $50,000 from that. That now is going to directly affect how much transportation. They would lower that by $50,000. Okay, so there's a little, like I said, this is all the background stuff that most people don't want to know about. But that's really the big driving factor for that year. We, as the school district, with our aid, we're going to get better return on our investment by trading them in.
So we get more for the bus, but pay, get more for the bus and pay, and pay more out of our general fund.
Correct. Steve?
Yeah, how many miles, on average, do these buses accrue over the 10-year period?
That's a great question. I know the last time I inquired about it, it was well, close to the 200, like 180, 200, somewhere in that range. I can double check again just to make sure that it's still the same. But I know last time we were looking at them, they're about up to there. So usually what will happen is the, the drivers will rotate some of the new buses around. And then as it starts getting up, they start putting them in the routes that really rack up the miles. And then they get traded in. So there's always that rotation of buses getting into that high mileage route. So the, Mike is really good about tracking. What buses do you think we're going to start trading in to rack up the miles to get them traded in and save the miles on the newer buses? Anything else? Okay. First one done. Couple more months worth to go.
Public comment. At this time, public comments are invited from individuals who have signed up with our district clerk by noon of the day of the board meeting and are speaking on a topic that pertains to an agenda item. Speakers must be a district resident, property owner, employee, and/or a parent of a current student. Wait to be called by the board president and approach the podium to speak using the microphone. Identify yourself. Limit remarks to not more than three minutes. Appoint a spokesperson if a concern is a group concern and supplement verbal presentation with written reports if necessary or desired. Conduct themselves in a respectful or civil manner in accordance with the district's code of conduct and all applicable laws, regulations, and policies. Personal comments toward a member of the community, staff, students, or Board of Education member will not be considered appropriate. A representative will respond to each individual within five business days. Please note, the board has the right to determine whether particular subjects are inappropriate for public comment. Today, we have nobody signed up for public comments. So on to number seven. Old business, new business, and issues of public interest, 7.1. Respond acknowledge of previous public comment. We have none. 7.2. Solar eclipse is going to be Monday, April 8th, 2024. And Sue, do you want to- There's no school.
So, yeah. Yeah, so there's, on April 8th, for the solar thing with all the anticipated traffic, it's even getting, building up now on the news and stuff. I've seen more and more of that talk coming through since it's coming through, anticipating higher than anticipated traffic and things like that. So one of the things we wanted to propose is that for that day, we would not have our 12-month staff, our administrative staff, or the CSEA staff that would normally work on that day. So there's already no day for teachers, paraprofessional staff, and students that day. So that would be a, nobody would, else would then also report. And we just want to make sure that with that, if, if the board approves that, then that way, it'll, it'll count as a holiday, so we'll still get paid, in essence. Because it's not a snow day. So trying to figure out, just calling it as it is. So, you know, there is two MOAs, one for CSEA and one for the admin unit. So if you're thinking about it, they're the two that technically have contracts. The rest of us are either individuals or groups or something like that. So two bargaining units that would be affected.
Are there any events going on at the, in the buildings or out in the grounds for that day of celebration of the eclipse or anything like that happening?
In the football field?
Liability issues.
Is it in the consent?
There's a couple things here. I need a motion to-
Is that in the consent?
7.3.
Well, it's in the consent agenda.
Two MOAs, and there's, should be, your president should have it here. That's okay. My, my stuff is there. So you have the two MOAs. Bottom part of that is a word, actually.
That's in the consent agenda.
There you go.
You don't suffer it, right?
So, yeah. So the wording is in the consent agenda, so that will be approved.
Any?
And that'll just allow everyone to update the date and number for it.
Okay. Any further discussion? Any other questions? Okay.
So we're going to have an addition to the new business? Do you have that? We'll do it with the consent.
Okay. So we're good?
Right. We have wording for the employees who wouldn't be included in these bargaining units.
Okay, so you want to read?
So the MOAs are already in the consent. When we do that, we'll do an amendment to it and we'll add the wording to the rest of it. We'll verbally tell you what it states, and then we'll just have Stacy fill it in.
Okay. Add that time. Okay. All right. So 7.3. Motion to approve the following resolution. Resolved that the Board of Education appoints the law firm of Bond, and I'm not going to say that last name right, Shronnik, and King, P L L C, as legal counsel effective immediately. First, Russ. Second, Steve. Any discussion? We're good? Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Good. 7.4. Motion to approve resolution regarding the solar credit bid. I need a motion. First by Russ, second by Matt. Any questions or concerns? Nope. Anything further you want to add? No? Okay.
Just two few questions on the bid, but came in, I think it was. I've been working with Jeff on it. So we're all set.
Okay. All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Okay.
Been a long time. Been a long time. We've been dealing with solar.
Yes.
Yes. Okay. Eight. Verbal reports. 8.1. Instructional. Krista.
Just last week, on Wednesday and Thursday at Kelly School, teachers in third, fourth, and fifth grade who teach ELA participated in lesson studies with one of our consultants from Collaborative Classroom, which is the ELA programming that we utilize to drive our curriculum. Those were, I think, extremely beneficial. The consultant actually taught lessons to our students in different classes. There was a meeting beforehand with the teachers to talk about what that lesson would, you know, really be focusing on, some of the strategies and facilitation techniques that would be implemented. Then we all went in, watched the lessons, and then had an opportunity to come back and really debrief, talking about the things that we noticed. And then just really some time with the consultant to really strategize and to clarify, refocus on some pieces. So I think those were two days well spent. And big thanks to our teachers. Anytime you're out of the classroom, it's challenging because you're always leaving plans behind and leaving students. And we try not to do that often. But there are some times, and I think this past couple of weeks, the next two things I'll say are an example of that, where we just need a little bit more time with specific groups of teachers. On Friday, our middle school math teachers and our high school Algebra I and II teachers also participated in half-day sessions of professional learning. Our consultants from the Warner School at the University of Rochester, the Center for Professional Development and Reform, were here. They have been working with us for several years now to strengthen and shift our math pedagogy and the way in which we approach our instruction. And I'm really proud of our teams. I'd like to say that. You know, we've talked a lot about COVID learning gaps. Math is an area in particular where, you know, learning is, is sequential. And so it's an area where gaps pop out, right? And our teachers at the secondary level, our middle school and high school math teachers in particular, are, are dealing with some of those gaps at this point, right? They're trying to fill those in. And at the same time, shift to this really conceptual-based focus for instruction, which is wonderful because it allows our students a really deep understanding of what it means to actually do the math, right? They're not just plugging in numbers and formulas, but they're understanding why they're doing that and how it applies. And at the same time, keeping their eye on those state assessments and that region's performance with those high-stakes testing. So I just want to really recognize the really challenging job that they have. And they've come a, a long way, and they're doing a great, a great job. So kudos to them for being all in and, and working hard. Next week, our middle school teachers will be participating in iReady training. Kaitlin Buck, who's in our audience, and Lisa Ekins, I believe, will be working with groups of teachers at the middle school throughout the day. With shifts in staff, what we recognize is that we did a, a large training and series of trainings early on when we picked up our diagnostic tool, which is iReady for reading and math. With those changes, those staff changes, we missed some pieces that we need to kind of go back and help them to really be able to focus on and understand. At the same time, we want to all go deeper. So Kaitlin and Lisa have planned some professional learning on that. So thank you to them. That's going to be everybody's Valentine's present. It's on February 14th. And we are planning currently for our March 15th Superintendent's Conference Day. The focus for that day for our grade levels and departments across the district will really be on the idea of targeted instruction in those small groups that we've been talking about this year. So our department leaders and our grade level leaders are planning those days, and our instructional coaches will be supporting as departments and grade levels request. So those agendas are due to me by next Friday before people leave for break. And then we'll be going through to kind of spread the support where needed. We have a half-day coming up for middle school and high school on March 6th. And that will be the kickoff really to the targeted instruction work. It will set the stage for our secondary level. They'll be able to really dig into some data that will continue over into the March 15th Conference Day. So a lot going on from a professional learning perspective.
8.2. Finance. Ed?
Okay. Yeah, okay. The risk assessment audit has started. So they've been meeting with staff that do things and interviewing and talking with them and things like that. And the short straw that got selected was payroll. So that, it's this payroll's turn to have the deep dive into it and things like that. So they're going to look at that. So for those of you who don't know for that, they just kind of have a whole list of things that are high-risk, medium-risk, low-risk, and they just keep rotating things through to make sure things are going smoothly. So payroll has been busy gathering a whole bunch of information, scanning it, sending it to them to upload and take a look at with that. So Alicia has been very busy with that, along with payroll. Also, the comptrollers are here, so they're still working on some stuff there. Trying to work on the budget when I can. And there was some requests earlier, a long time ago. So if you were here for some, just don't think that things get forgotten. Sometimes they just get put on the back burner a little bit. We had some retirees inquire about being able to pay with credit cards, those type of things, which we normally don't do. So we keep bringing things up, trying to find something that's going to be the right fit. So we've had two things that we're trying to figure out which is going to be the best, if we can do it, to work with us. So if we can get all those things figured out, that might be an option going forwards for retirees, for payment of health insurance. And then if that works, we can expand it. So as, it's just those type of things. So you just got to find the right fix. Sometimes you don't have it, and you got to find the right company. And sometimes companies make changes with what you currently have that allow things to happen. So that's good. I think that's about it.
8.3. Human resources.
So since the last meeting, I've been able to participate in job fair. So we have a great partnership with the Department of Labor as we hosted them here for a job fair in November. They also have virtual job fairs, which research shows is a great way to reach diversified audience, right, and invite inclusion because people don't have to be able to travel. They can meet me right from the computer. So that's always a great opportunity. We've participated in that a few times, and most recently this month. This year, my New Year's resolution professionally was to challenge myself to continue learning even in a new position. But I know that's important. So I've been taking the opportunity to participate in some webinars through the Society of Human Resources Management, most recently a webinar on employee engagement and benefits compliance for 2024. So I've just been digging in and trying to, on top of learn Newark processes and procedures, I know it's important to keep up the skill set as far as HR learning. So I've been involved in that. We're also working on the, as you know, the workforce violence, workplace violence prevention program. So been actively planning that and some of the documentation required, working together with my team. Each month, I am lucky to participate in an HR group. So we have a RASP group, which is a Rochester-area HR group, where our HR leaders from Monroe, Ontario, and Wayne County come together. And so our last meeting was Friday. And I, I'd just like to share how powerful that is and the insight that I gained. So I appreciate it, being able to attend that leadership opportunity. We are currently sharing of openings that we have to get an idea of the landscape of needs across the district's hiring-wise. We're always sharing best practices, and we serve as advocacy. So our regional RASP group reports to the New York State group of HR leaders. So we're also teaming up with our representatives in state ed. We work a lot with certification. So it's really just a great advocacy opportunity that I wanted you to know we're a part of, and we have a voice in needs as far as working with the state. We've been working a lot on our staffing, reviewing staffing, strategic staffing for next year. It's really been an in-depth process, but very rewarding and valuable. It's led to some great conversations with our leaders as well, and just gave us a good perspective on where we're at and where we need to move forward. So I've definitely appreciated all that hard work from our team, too.
Thank you. 8.4. Superintendent.
This is National School Counseling Week. So students, if you haven't thanked your counselors, make sure you stop into their office and thank them for everything that they do. As you know, school counselors office, offer guidance on educational choices, but they're there to assist you also with any mental health needs or any problems and life guidance that you're looking for, your overall well-being and success. So just wanted to give a shout out to our counselors this week. Secondly, yesterday, we had a visit from Regent Hal. He came and he was immersed in the Wayne Finger Lakes region, where he visited Canadagua, Red Jacket, P-Tech. And then he visited us last at the very end of the day, where he visited the middle school. He was able to see our agricultural program, our living environment class, and our French class. He was also able to connect with our master teacher, Kim Sicardi, and with the MBK program there. Following that visit, he came back to district office, where he joined several of their district-wide superintendents, our district superintendent, Lynn Rutnick, some of her team. And we were able to advocate for some of the things that are coming down that we think are essential for our district. We were able to get some answers around the science of reading and what that was going to look like in the future. We were able to talk about the unfunded mandates that continue to hit us and plague us and seek funding for things that we know are pertinent. For example, the workplace violence prevention law, what that will require if we're going to be able to do it accurately and support the school to mitigate violence, where the funds are to support that. And then, of course, the, the hot topic of electric buses. But it was a great conversation. He was super personal and definitely someone that we can reach out to in the future.
Thank you. Nine. Review and approval of the consent agenda. I need a motion. First by Steve, second by Russ. Do we need that extra lingo? Okay.
Whereas April 8th, 2024, is not a scheduled day of instruction for students, and only certain 12-month employees within the district are scheduled to work on that day. Whereas a total solar eclipse will occur in the region where the district is located. I'm getting nervous.
That's a lot to read.
Whereas-
It is. It's a long thing to read.
That's why he gave it up so easily.
I know.
Whereas the district wishes to address the work schedule of certain 12-month employees who are otherwise scheduled to work on April 8th, 2024, on a non-precedent-setting basis. All right. Now therefore, be resolved as follows. Based upon- Based upon the recommendation of the superintendent of schools, the board hereby approves memorandums of understanding with both CSEA, uh, Local 1000, AFSCME, Ed, AFLI-CIO, Wayne County Unit 9101, Newark Sunro School District Unit, and the Newark Administrators Unit, to authorize these unit 12-month employees who are otherwise scheduled to work on April 8th, 2024 to not report to work on such day, and that such day shall be with regular pay and without charge to such employees leave accruals. Based upon the recommendation of the superintendent of schools, the board hereby approves the authorization of any other 12-month employees who are not members of any district bargaining unit and who are otherwise scheduled to work on April 8th, 2024, to not report to work on such day, and that such day shall be with regular pay and without, without charge to such employees leave accruals.
I liked my shortened version better. But that's all the legalese for the approval, so that we can continue, so.
So are we all in favor? Aye. Any opposed?
Oop, did we have a first and a second for the?
Yeah, we did. That, that was. Steve, then Russ.
Got it, thank you.
Okay, 10, board development committee reports and monitoring of board. 10.1, board committee meetings and related updates. Um, I'm going to do legislative for Four County School Boards Association and NISBA. Today was, um, lobby day at the Legislative Office Building, and I and 11 other people from Four County area went as a group to go see six representatives in the Legislative Office Building. Um, it was a great day. Um, had lots of very good conversations on what they are feeling and what we are feeling. So it was a nice dialogue back and forth. Legislative is also meeting, Four County is also meeting on Zoom this Saturday, and we're going to be talking about the federal position paper, um, because we did not get to that before going for lobby day. So that is going to be a major focus on Saturday. Wayne Finger Lakes Exposies, um, had their meeting on Monday. Uh, they had a new student council, um, group that for the practical nurse program, they wanted more of a student voice. So they started a student council, and Carly Maine came and presented on what the student council will be doing and what kind of, um, conversations have they had been doing. So that was great. And then they also shared their audits on the practical nurse program and what the recommendations were for that. So that was Wayne Finger Lakes Exposies. Uh, Four County has a professional development in February, so if you guys are interested, please let Stacy know. I've done a lot of talking today. Um, 10.2, Board of Education Subcommittee Reports, um, audits.
So just very quick, because it's also budget, uh, I'll probably be sending out an email the next day or two just to see if we can get a date either after the February break or the next week, just to start taking a closer look at the budget, so if you have any more specific questions for that, so.
Policy committee, you met today? Anything?
We met today, and, uh, I think we moved one policy, but, uh, the rest, we sort of have to, have to go around it a different, uh, one, back to everyone. Uh, some of them have to, superintendent has to look over, um, the teaching one.
Sit down, teaching, yeah.
Okay.
But we're moving right along with the policies.
Okay. Facilities and Safety Committee?
February 29th, I can't remember the time, probably at the high school district office again.
Okay. Okay. Instructional Committee, we met on the 22nd, and we discussed the Blue Ribbon Commission, um, for graduation measures. Where are they in the process of that, um, and also the science of reading. Steve, do you want to say anything? Oh, and we also did the CSE reports and.
Okay, yes.
Yeah. Do you have anything to add, or?
Yeah, we learned quite a bit about the, um, the, uh, Committee for Special Education reports that we, we approved and what they mean and how they reflect on each student in service. And, um, that was very informational.
And our next meeting is coming up, February 12th, next Monday, so, and we're going to go visit.
I think actually our next three meetings are visits to different schools. So, um, we'll have the high school on Monday, February 12th, Lincoln School on March 25th. That'll be our visit there, our visit to Kelly April 15th, and then our last two meetings in May and June. Those will be actual subcommittee, regular meetings.
Co-curricular Committee? Yep, February 27th, so you're next, so. Okay, 10.3, second reading and adoption of the following draft policy, 6190. It's the Workplace Violence Prevention Policy Statement. I need a first. Mary, second by Miranda. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Nope. Um, I'm going to have students, if you would like to come up, and we can sign your papers. Anybody can sign them, so. So number 11 is the proposed future agenda items, ongoing discussions. We have 11.1, the Seal of Civil Readiness Presentation by Krista. That's going to be March 6th. 11.2 is the Recruitment and Retention Plan by Christine. That's April 10th. And then 11.3 is our Future Linkage Meeting, April 24th, based on the Recruitment and Retention Plan, um, and that's at 5:30 in the High School LGI. Um, any other proposed? No, good. I need a motion for adjournment, first by Russ, second by Miranda. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, have a good night.
So who's going to the basketball game Friday?
I am.